Open the meeting at 8.59am and thank councillors for their attendance. We don't have any apologies, I don't think. Everyone is there?
councillor Edwards is walking in now, Mr Mayor.
Okay, so we'll just wait for councillor Edwards.
He's back now.
Oh, he's back, okay, great. Okay, item 7.1, auction of historical memorabilia and equipment in Roma. Councillors, this is about obviously getting, obviously getting feedback about wanting to save some history that's connected with Roma. And I think we've got the Roma Historical Precincts Incorporated president on the phone, Ken Bites. Uh, Ken, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, yep.
Okay, so with approval of the council, just ask if you can just give an overview of what you're planning to do. And then obviously council can consider what it would like to do, you know?
Okay. Righto, well, just, we're right to go?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay, just a short overview, the Roma Historical Precinct really is just mostly concentrating on dairy and butter industry memorabilia. But we're also interested in items of interest to the Maranawa area. The first one that's going to come up at the auction is a wool wagon. And Dennis Hickey has verified that it belonged to Fergie's father, RJ Williams. And Dennis has all the photos and history of that wool wagon. So I only found that out last night, but yeah, Dennis said it's definitely from, yeah, was Fergie Williams' father. So that's one item we would like to issue. The next one that comes up in the auction is a horse-drawn street sweeper that come from the Roma Town Council. It's probably not that important, but if it goes cheap enough, we would like to get that. But probably the most important one is Rowley Howard's wagon. That's what we've, has really got the town going. And that, I did put a photo on yesterday, and the bloke standing on the back is a very young Tommy O'Rourke. So a lot of history there, so that is, that's probably the number one item that we'll be going for. And then there is a tipping tray that could be from Bassett's Winery. We still haven't, that hasn't been verified yet, but hopefully, yeah, by tomorrow, we should know. So that's, that's the main couple of things. There is also a milk cart there that was first registered milk cart in Queensland apparently, but it's not local. So it will, and it's not in the first amount, in the first items, it's, I think it's after Rowley's cart. So it'll just be if, but they're talking, it could go up to 10 grand because it's in really good nick. So, but because it's not, no Roma history there, we might have to give that one a miss. So, so really, it's Rowley's cart and RJ Williams' wool wagon are the other two main things, I think. And that's, yeah, that's probably about it.
Righto.
But these, yeah, you don't know whether Rowley's cart's going to go for $2,000 or $10,000. That's, that's the big, that's the big thing, so, yep.
Then, Ken, so you've put the word out for donations and so forth, what amount have you got roughly?
Well, up until yesterday, we had about $6,000. And then last night, a drilling, a local drilling company round Roma, um, gave us $5,000.
Right.
So that, that puts us up to 10,000 to 11,000 dollars. So that was, that was a real shock yesterday when they, when they come over with that, but yeah. Um, but yeah, so we're, we're in a pretty good position.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
George, you said a few other people had promised money as well and checks were on the way, aside that 6,000?
Basically, at the, at the, at the present time, it's all been donations. Yes, and, and the money, yeah, we have actually got 11, nearly 11,000 dollars in the, in the account. So, yeah.
And, and yeah, the amount I've heard about Fergie Williams, like he was an absolute legend in the district, wasn't he?
Yeah, well, Dennis has got all these photos, apparently the Williams boys were all photo, always had their box brownie with them.
Yes.
And so there's lots of photos and, and Dennis, yeah, Dennis was pretty, yeah, pretty, yeah, pretty excited when I rang him up and, and asked him about it. And he sort of mentioned that maybe Fergie's first truck that Dennis has restored might even find its way back to us. So we've got to, yeah, we've got to, um, yeah, keep it going now. So, so it makes, it makes that wool wagon, which is not in very good repair, but it is, is all there. So I'm hoping it's, it goes cheap enough.
Yeah.
The Rowley Howard one, for anyone who doesn't know, would be fairly fitting for the community. In the last two and a half years, we've had the refunds team going. When I was a kid, that was Rowley's one with income around town, just taking all the bags. I just walked up, I just walked up the street, then we went and just threw the bottle rubbish and, you know, rubbish bottle, I should say.
Is there a photo of these items that we can see?
Yeah, Joe, on the councillor Hancock, sorry, you can go, there's attachment, I'm just looking at them now.
I'm on the auction, I'm on all these photos, but I don't know what I'm looking at. Sorry about, excuse my ignorance, but.
Um, the wool wagon, yeah, um, I think the wool wagon is up, up at the beginning of the auction. I don't know whether they've got them in, got them in numbers.
Is it under the chronicle photo? There's a Torma Chronicle one.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, it's only a, oh, a Torma Chronicle photo or cart.
No, no, there's a Torma Chronicle on the back of a little soldier.
Cart.
And then, then the, straight underneath it is a big, an old wagon, big.
Yeah, it's a big four-wheel, four really big wheels.
Yeah, that's it.
Uh, and a big platform, it used to carry 20 tonnes.
Righto.
I don't know how, but, yeah.
They stacked them all right.
Um, and Rowley's cart has actually got Rowley Howard written on it, it's yellow. And the street sweeper, it's just, yeah, you probably don't, um, it's just a, it's got large wheels, horse-drawn. And it's just a yellow frame, but I think it will, yeah, it'd be good to obtain, but we'll sort of put, yeah. I think the wool wagon and Rowley's cart are the other two main ones at this stage.
Righto, any other questions, councillors?
No, that's all good.
I just, it's not really a question, it's probably more a statement. The, the thing is, they, all these things would have been donated, wouldn't they, back then?
Yes.
So it's just saying that they're not going to have to donate back to those. Yeah, like.
A lot of people have given all that stuff.
Good faith to an historical.
And then some more and all.
So, and like the Butter Factory is now going to be a museum, so why would we just actually say, well, what would you like?
Hmm? You did something.
Ken, you might be, I think I did mention, we mentioned this before. The, I forget what the cart was for, but the Baker family, I think they might have come and taken it back, the one they had when they found out it was on auction. I don't know if they had that confirmed.
Yeah, I, Ken, are you answering that?
There is probably one other, yep.
Yeah, go ahead.
There's one other thing, Tyson, the ambulance litter that, that they used to push the patients up to the Roma Hospital by hand. It has been, it was only ever a loan to the museum and it has been picked up by the ambulance and dropped down to the Butter Factory. So we've got the old litter.
That's probably good.
So it's, it's down there now, it's, and it's in very good condition.
Yeah, good.
Ken, George, you're mate, I was just, someone was saying that the large stuff is auctioned this weekend and then there'll be another auction, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, there'll be another auction of all the smaller, all the smaller items.
Yes.
Uh, this, this auction is for all the horse-drawn equipment, there's a lot of combine bells and all that sort of thing. But, um, but yeah, we're just, we're just really after the, the, the stuff that pertains to Roma. Or Maranawa, I should say.
But all that small stuff will get auctioned later, another day.
Yeah, it'll, yeah, yeah, and we don't really know what's there. Um, so.
Okay, and Joe Hancock here, Ken, so these items will fit into the, um, criteria of the Butter Factory? And, and how, and how you're doing that as a museum?
Yeah, well, they will be actually in the, in the workshop next door to the Butter Factory.
Okay, yeah.
Um, it's the, the workshop is, it's original 1910. It's been re-cladded, but the original frame and everything is intact. And that will be where, where that sort of, yeah, we're trying to keep the Butter Factory real, it's just for the, for the, for the dairy and butter, um, things, and, yep.
Yep, but then there'll be another one retired, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, councillors? Righto, well, any other questions?
Hi, thanks.
Righto, well, thank you, Ken, thanks for dialing in, obviously council will consider it.
Okay.
Thank you for briefing the full council.
Okay, Tyson. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, bye.
Okay, bye.
Bye. Okay, councillors, I'd like to move that, that council, CEO, do you have any wording or anywhere where if we, I would like, do we have any, uh, any numbers or so forth or where we could, if council is going to move that we've moved an amount of $10,000, um, subject to, if it's needed, to purchase the items mentioned in the auction? Through Roma Historical Precincts?
Yeah, I just, I have a question, Mr Mayor.
Sure, please go ahead.
Um, just, how do we know, so they've, they've got over $10,000 now. Um, how do we know if it's needed, like, yeah, how do we do this? Because they were saying originally a budget of $10,000, so.
Uh, well, my, my view is that if council decided to give $10,000 if it's needed, it would be to do with the items that are mentioned. And if they can buy them within their budget, then the money will be returned. But if it's needed to buy those items, if they don't have enough money on the day and it's too late to come back then, then we secure them for the people of the Maranawa. Um, and, and that's really the only purpose. So if that auction doesn't go for a lot of money, then I think they'll be able to handle it themselves. But we need to make the decision today whether we're supporting it or not supporting it. And obviously, I believe as a non-for-profit with an interest in history, that this non-for-profit is the best way. Otherwise, council could be bidding against local groups, if you know what I mean, if they decide to support it, so.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
Tyson, I didn't quite hear all that, but what you're suggesting is we give them the 10, oh, if it's approved, we give them a figure.
Yeah.
And then if not used, they return it.
Yeah, they'll be returned next week if it's not used, and they would brief us on, you know, what they've, what they've purchased.
On the terms and conditions of the sale, it says cash on the day or approved cheque. No, no, um, no, um, no, you must.
Cash or cheque, there's no trace of this arrangement, is there? So, Mr Mayor, I've got a question, so is that just for the two items?
Um, well, I'd like to give them the flexibility if they wanted to get those items within that amount of money. Because if they can verify the, uh, the history behind the winery tipping tray, um, well, then it's valuable to the area, obviously with the oldest winery in Australia, um, in Queensland. And, um, and, but yeah, would be limited to the items that they've mentioned. And as they said, they've got a amount of money that might cover it all. But, but we need to, I believe, decide today if we're going to support it. And then the money would be returned if it is not used.
So Tyson, Julie here, are we actually, and I'm only doing wording, because I'm in favour, I'm just thinking of the wording. So do we basically move something that says that the Historical Society, actually, after they've made their purchases or they've done their bidding on their successful auctions, they can then, is it approval for them to bid up to a certain amount of money? Or something, is that what you're suggesting?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm actually saying, doing a castigation today to the Roma Historical Precincts for 10,000, subject to wording that says that for the items mentioned.
Hey Tyson?
The, yeah, go ahead.
See, Brittany, we're just working on a suitable resolution.
Okay, good, yeah, no, that's, that's what we need, we need it, we need it tight enough to do the job with, um, um, and that everyone understands it's coming back if it's not being used.
So Brittany, can you just read out what you've got?
Yep, so I've got that council approved the amount of $10,000 for Roma Historical Precincts Inc., subject to whether the amount is needed, i.e. returned within seven days if not needed.
Yeah, and, and.
If unspent, yes.
Yeah, noting that, um, an amount, the, the amount is available within council sponsorship budget.
Um, do we need to say what it's for, but?
The three items, yeah.
To purchase a historical item, you know, that are relevant to the Maranawa or the three items or?
However, we don't really know whether there's going to be one or three or what the price is going to be, so perhaps.
But could we just put for purchase of historical items relevant to the Maranawa, like give them something?
Yeah, yeah.
Their bidding is, um, his.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's very good because it gives them direction, it's got to be relevant, which they ride on to anyway, but, um, yeah.
But for our rate payers, they know that we're investing in historical items that's relevant to the Maranawa.
Yep.
I think it's got to have historical items relevant to the Maranawa.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, any questions, councillors, or comments or anything?
I think that covers it pretty well.
Righto.
Ken Bites mentioned about the, you know, the ambulance cart or something?
No, it's all good.
Yeah.
It's been, yeah, no, it's all good.
Um, Mr Mayor, can I just mention something really quickly?
Sure.
Um, I just want to mention that on, on the back of going to the Small Museums Conference, um, I was really, I feel, it felt a bit sad that I met someone down there from Redlands who goes, "Oh, we have your steam", they called it like a steam train. Um, "We have that in the Redlands Museum and it comes from, from the Sarat and Roma area." And I was like, "Oh, how did we let that go from our area?", like, it had such a history behind it. So it is important to be able to keep this stuff in our area.
So can we just read out the draft resolution again?
Yep, so that council approved the amount of $10,000 for the Roma Historical Precincts Inc. For the purchase of historical items relevant to the Maranawa, subject to whether the amount is needed, i.e. returned within seven days if unspent, noting that the amount is available within council sponsorship budget.
And have we got the, has that got the historical item, items relevant to the Maranawa, have we got that in there?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, good. Um, the, the other thing is, I think we need to have something that this train spurn needs to happen today.
Well, no, it's, it's, Mr Mayor, because they'll need the cash for tomorrow.
Yeah. So we don't need that in the motion?
No, I see, I said that will happen if it's approved, once approved, Mr Mayor.
Righto. Um, and well, councillor Ladwell, because you, you brought this up in the original, would you, do you wish to move that motion?
Well, Mr Mayor, you started to move something, but just ask for advice.
Yeah, I did, yeah, but I can defer it, can I or withdraw that?
Are you happy in second, Mr councillor?
I'd be happy with that, because it's nothing.
You happy with that? Righto.
Um, sorry, Mr, sorry, Mr Mayor, I've just realised one more thing with that motion that I just.
Sure.
I'm worried about, um, you know how we've got, um, subject to whether the amount is needed, i.e. returned within seven days if unspent? Um, do you think we need to be putting in there, returned within seven days, any unspent funds? Because I'm just looking for, looking for guidance, but, um, from the CEO. But they might spend $6,000 of the 10,000, which means the 4,000 would come back to us. I'm just wondering if we need to be putting, making it clear that it's any unspent funds?
Okay, yeah, because we're effectively providing an upfront approval of the 10,000, maybe use the upfront?
Yeah, I, I don't mind, I think Ken and his committee would be responsible with it, but I don't mind what parity, what your opinion is.
Yes.
That the council approved the amount of 10,000?
The upfront amount.
Oh, the upfront amount, okay. Approved the upfront, amount of $10,000.
Yeah, speaking louder, thanks for that.
Sorry, um, that council approved the upfront amount of $10,000 for the Roma Historical Precincts Inc. For the purchase of historical items relevant to the Maranawa, subject to whether the amount is needed, i.e. returned within seven days, any unspent funds, noting that the amount is available within council sponsorship budget.
Yeah, we can probably, um, remove that subject to whether it's needed because we've got with any unspent funds to be returned within seven days.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm happy with that as the motion, is the secondaire happy with that?
Yes, of course.
Righto, um, any opposition to the motion? Uh, does anyone wish to speak to the motion or? Yeah, I'd just like to say, um, I think there's been a groundswell of people contacting people and saying, "This is very important to the community of the Maranawa." So I think this is, um, a good opportunity to try and save some history as we, we don't have a lot of history in the Maranawa that's available like this, so I think this is a great thing. Uh, does anyone else wish to speak to the motion?
Sorry, Brittany?
I've just, um, I've really, I just want to quickly just double check, I've taken that wording out. So I just want to make sure that this, what I've got, like, is the final word, like wording, just make sure that you're happy. I've just, I've written that council approved the upfront amount of $10,000 for the Roma Historical Precincts Inc. for the purchase of historical items relevant to the Maranawa and any unspent funds to be returned within seven days, noting that the amount is available within council sponsorship budget.
Excellent.
Okay, I'm happy with that, is the secondaire happy?
Yes.
Uh, did, okay, on that basis, does anyone else want to say anything? Okay, we'll go to the vote, all those in favour? Yes.
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 Nine, zero.
And, yeah, so no one is against? Righto, nine, zero. Okay, moving on to C1, Roma Salyard's draft.
So we've got a declaration of interest, Mr Mayor.
Righto, please go ahead.
I'm Lady Taylor, I'm calling for the meeting and I have a declarable conflict of interest as a result of my daughter Carly Taylor working for the contract AAM operations project, which is a contractor of reference and recall. That may have an interest in the matter. However, my daughter Carly is based in Brisbane and works in the finance area and has no involvement in the day-to-day operations of the Salyard site in Roma. The agenda item was initiated following a deputation from the Romanized AAM representatives and pertains to the operational managers on site at the Salyard in Roma. Although I have a declarable conflict of interest of the matter, I do not believe a reasonable person could have a perception or bias from agenda item C1. Therefore, I choose to remain in the meeting. However, I will respect the decision of the meeting on whether I can remain and participate in the decision.
Okay, do we have someone to move on that?
Has anyone in the chamber that's got the wording?
I was just going to ask the same thing.
I don't have the wording, I'm like.
And they're just digging up at the moment.
If I've got to move something when I know some wording to move, that's fair with us, councillors.
I've got the shake.
Mr Mayor, can I move a motion, please?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
I'd like to move that it's in the public interest that council, Taylor, and the person agenda item C1, because a reasonable person would trust that the final decision was made in the public interest.
So just to clarify, that is, that's for the councillor to stay in the room, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, uh, do we have a secondaire?
All seven, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, deputy mayor, councillor McMullen, uh, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All those against? Nine, zero.
So councillors, um, the, the process for going into closed is a little different. So, Mr Mayor, would you like me to read out the wording?
Uh, yes, please.
That in accordance with the provisions of section 254J of the Local Government Regulation, um, that the local government resolved that part of the meeting of the local government be closed to the public as it considers it necessary to close the meeting to discuss the following matter, um, relevant sections of section 55J, 3E and M of the legal advice obtained by the local government or legal proceedings involving the local government, including, for example, leading proceedings that may be taken by or against the local government and matters that may directly affect the health and safety of an individual or a group of individuals. So those E and F is what permits us to go on to close. Um, under the standing orders now, we need to include a general overview. Um, and the overview is in accordance with section 27.4 of council standing orders, the matter contains legal advice and safety matters raised with council in relation to the Roma Salyard's drafts. Uh, that information has been included to the public agenda as well.
Okay, well, does someone wish to move that way, to go into closed on that basis?
I'll move it, we're going, we're going to close on that basis, Mr Mayor.
Uh, do we have a secondaire? Uh, do we have a seconder?
Councillor Taylor?
Councillor Taylor, yeah, I couldn't quite hear. Um, and, uh, any opposition? All of them will go to the vote, all those in favour? Yes.
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 Yes. All those against? Nine, zero. Councillor O'Neill, uh, in relation to clarifying, um, C1 Roma Salyard's draft, do you, you wish to move something?
Yes, I'll move that, um, council note the actions that will be taken by council officers, including that one. Council has an obligation to investigate safety of the new drafts in response to the concerns raised by the Roma Livestock Agents Association slash agents. Two, a qualified independent third party provider will be appointed, uh, slash engaged to investigate the safety of the new drafts and the old drafts with funding to be provided from the Salyard's operating budget. Three, the Roma Livestock Agents Association and all agents will receive correspondence to confirm, A, the scope of the investigation to ensure no health and safety concerns are omitted and B, that council will continue to, um, rely on the advice that the new drafts were designed with use of safety as a priority, with the review to include any changes to the initial design. Four, the Roma Livestock Agents Association and all agents will be, will be provided with an opportunity to express their views during the investigation, including as to outcomes to form health and safety decisions regarding the draft. Uh, five, provide a report from an independent third party to a future meeting in council with recommendations to, A, improve the management of any identified hazards at the Salyard's drafts in accordance with applicable risk management requirements under the Workplace Health and Safety Act. And B, where improvements cannot be immediately put in place, manage any identified hazards in the interim.
Okay, do we have a seconder for that motion?
Yes.
Uh, councillor Taylor, any opposition, I'll speak in opposition, does move wish to speak to the motion?
I've just got a question first, councillor McMullin, just so I'm clear, the additions that, um, you'd thought of there in there?
Sorry?
The, the additions that you, um, thought of there in, in this recommendation?
They're in red in, um, um, item three dot point, uh, section B with the, with the review to include any changes to the initial design.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry?
Thanks, thanks very much, councillor McMullin. Um, uh, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, the resolution speaks for itself.
Okay, um, does anyone want to speak in opposition of the motion? Okay, um, does anyone else wish to speak? We'll go to the vote, all those in favour? Yes.
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 All those against?
Yes.
Yes. Can anyone see the numbers there?
Seven to two, I, I think, from what I see.
Is everyone happy with those numbers?
Councillor Edwards and the mayor are against, is that true?
Yeah.
Yeah, can I call for a division? And, um, uh, seven, two, is all councillors happy with that as the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Righto, any further business, councillors? Okay, well, I'll close the meeting at 10:23 and thank you for your attendance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.